Welcome to the City Council Meeting. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Don Noviello, followed by the pledging agents.
We gather here again this evening to address the hopes, concerns, and opportunities facing our city. We do this with the hope of making the city productive and safe as we move forward. Doing so requires new ideas, new methods, and a positive outlook. I take this time to thank my council colleagues, those in the administration, and the people of their city for their input and continuing efforts that will allow us all to help create and sustain our future in the best possible fashion. And as we all work together on behalf of our city, may we gain strength and resolve from one another through reason, logic, and always compassion. Thank you.
My pledging agents are the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Noviello. Next item on the agenda is approval of City Council meeting minutes dated June 7, 2018. Can I have a motion in a second to approve those minutes?
No, moment, second.
Hearing motion, a second. Any comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are approved. The next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, so we can move on to the next item, which is a presentation by Mary Woods regarding neighborhood peace poll. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? My talk tonight is in response to some questions that Mayor Campana had in relation to peace poll planting and funds that were approved by City Council in the year 2015. It was in March of 2015 that we had a peace poll planting, and I wanted to explain and share a little more of the story, really the rest of the story about the peace poll planting. Because it's a good story, and we really haven't had a chance to tell it, so it began, really, in January of 2015, when actually Mayor Campana and the Police Department called for help from the community. They said that the drug problem and the drug dealers and the crime that was happening across our community, especially on Second Street, was just out of control, and it was the first time in the history of the Police Department that they actually called for help from the people. So, at that time, on Second Street, Corey Burkholder, who's not here tonight unfortunately, but he was in charge of the Neighborhood Strategic Alliance on Second Street, and he asked for the beloved community, including Vanessa Hunter and Tanya Anderson and myself, to coach or counsel these people on Second Street that were really being harassed by drug dealers. And so, we would talk. Star Poole, who's here today, a resident from Second Street, was harassed by drug dealers, and she has five young children, and the women that we spoke with were just so afraid to let their kids go outside. The neighborhood was so bad, there were -- one little child shot his finger off by finding a gun in the street. There's needles in the street from drug dealers, and it was clearly a, like a crime scene waiting to happen on a nightly basis, and I'm sure the Police Department knows about all the calls that came in to Second Street. So, at that time, when Tanya and Vanessa and I were meeting with Corey, someone said, "Well, will you plant a peace poll here?" And I don't really remember whose idea it was, but somehow or another, I remember talking to Councilman Bill Hall about having a peace poll ceremony. Now, the peace poll has its history with a 13-month peace walk that my husband David and I went on called the 13-Moon Walk for Peace. And we went all around the country, and we came through Williamsport, and behind me are proclamations from Mayor Campana and from Rick Marabito to honor our peace polls, which we planted all around the country as part of a national peace trail. So, when the idea came in March of 2015 to build a peace poll on Second Street, this was three years after the peace walk, I said, "I can't make this decision by myself. I really need to talk to our vision keeper, Audrey Scott-Williams, and Karen Hunter-Watson, who live in Alabama." And they said, "Well, we'll make, I guess we can make another peace poll for this good cause, and we will come up and give a presentation." So, this was really good news, because we needed help, and we needed something unconventional. And Audrey and Karen are powerful speakers, and they're very commanding. So, when they came to the Second Street Day, where David and I made the peace poll, you can see here on the picture, that's Audrey and Karen to the right. That's Audrey with a white scarf on, and Karen is next to her. They came, drove up from Alabama, and that was part of the expenses, is paying 46 cents a mile to have them come up here. And the peace poll expenses were all added into this monies that Bill Hall said there were legislative monies in an account for cultural projects like this. And this was truly a cultural project, because the Neighborhood Strategic Alliance had a big cookout, hot dogs and hamburgers, and invited the neighborhood to come out, and it was cold. It was March 22, but we have our coats on. You see our beloved Richard James there, holding the peace poll, as it was put in a hole, and all the people, all the residents, were asked to take a handful of dirt and put it in the hole with a prayer, an intention, a blessing, for this peace poll to change the neighborhood and make it be a safe place. And here you see a group of some of the people that were there that day at the peace poll planning. I see Judge Christian Frye there, and police officers were there. It was a big community event, and it was followed by a peace walk, where Karen Hunter-Watson was singing a song, which you'll hear a little bit in the video, "We Ain't Gonna Let Nobody Turn Us Around." And we had all the neighbors come out of their houses and walk with us down the street. It was very powerful. And the children were leading the peace walk, holding hands. It was very palpable. It was like the community saying, "We're not gonna take this anymore." And so, before I tell you the rest of the story, I'd like to introduce you to Star Poole, a young mother and resident of Second Street, to tell you a little something about the before and after of the peace poll. So, Star, will you come up, please?
Hey, you guys. Can you guys hear me okay? Yes, okay. Well, I just know going into that day, I was fairly new to Second Street. I'd probably been on the street about six to seven months, but within my first month or two, that's when the little boy shot a hole through his hand. And I went from living on the street to having somewhere to stay, but not being able to go outside, because the people didn't trust me, and I couldn't trust them, and there was so much things going on. People used to go, come from other streets to fight on our street, or they would come from bars and go to Second Street to fight, and then go home. It was really, really strange. No one had any respect for the families or anything. And that day, I didn't know it was gonna be as instrumental as it was, when we was told to walk around, and some of the people, most of us didn't go outside. Like I said, I stayed in the house, and I felt like we were all kind of forced to come outside and be a part of this. No one wanted to be left out. No one wanted to be the reason why it was held up. And all the families came outside, and we all ate together and talked together. And honestly, from those seven months I was there, I never really walked on the other side of the street, because I was kind of scared of the people on the other side of the street. It was like, it was so many things going on. But as Ms. Mary said, we started from one part of the street and walked all the way around, singing, you know, "We will not let anything tear us down," with the kids leading away, and it felt so powerful, and it set a tone for the whole street, and it really let us know that other people saw what was going on and other people cared what was going on. And it wasn't like, you know, "Here's this stick, and, you know, just deal with it." It was a whole ceremony. It had a meaning, and we chose the words that was on it. We put the dirt in there, and we took ownership of it. And if it didn't mean anything, it was so many things going on, people would've tried to destroy it. You know, we had talked some months ourselves, like, "We're not gonna let anyone tear this down. No one's gonna touch this. This is our thing." And from that point on, so many great things happened since then. The Garden happened because of the Hard Williamsport and other organizations, and so many things happened. We have so many more experiences from that experience, where beforehand, it was no trust, it was no peace at all, and they literally brought the peace, to whereas I met people that, they were my neighbors, I finally got to meet them that day and eat with them and talk with them. And I feel, it was not a waste at all, and for 1,500, it was nowhere near a waste. That was amazing that they took time out of their life, and they could've skipped right over that street and, you know, went somewhere else, and we was a part of that walk that they did, and they included us, and they saw that we needed it. And we appreciate it so much. I appreciate it as a mother of five. It definitely brought peace and trust to the street.
Thank you. And David, you want to show the little video of the peace walk? Thanks, Star. Stay up here, too. Yeah, while he's bringing up this video of the walk, the neighbors were all invited to choose what words they wanted engraved on that peace poll. And the words they chose on Second Street, oh, here it is, were "Peace, Renew Serenity and Unity," because that's what they wanted in the neighborhood. So, people were feeling empowered that day, and it was the first time many of them felt safe to walk in the neighborhood. So, at the end of that ceremony, a few months later, I ran into Corey Burkholder, who works down there on Second Street in the NSA Neighborhood Security Alliance, and he said, "You wouldn't believe what's happened on Second Street." He says, "First of all, the whole neighborhood has changed. The drug dealers left." And he said, "Now, people are coming out of their homes, and they're out on their porches, and they're all talking with each other, and the children are safe to come out and play again." He said, "You wouldn't believe it. It's like a totally different neighborhood." And Star shared that experience as well. So, I was really excited to hear the rest of the story. I don't even know if Bill Hall has heard this, but I would love for him to know that I think he made a really great decision by using those cultural funds for this event, because it let the people on Second Street know that people cared and that their city government wanted to help them and find an answer, as something as simple as a peace poll and a community cookout and gathering with the intention of sticking together and finding an answer. It really did work. So, that's the good news, is that it was money well spent. Okay? So, thank you so much.
Thank you for, both of you, for, all three of you, actually, four, excuse me, especially all three of you for taking time out to tell us that wonderful story. You know, a story that's not just about something buried into the ground as a symbol, but really about a transformative, catalytic event that empowered, it sounds like, a community to become a true community and have a lasting effect. I'm told that, you know, you can look at the data and see that what you're saying is also true in terms of the number of callouts and crimes that are committing in that area. So, I was Vice President of Council with Bill Hall as President, and he came to us to talk about it at the time, and I'm not sure that we, each of us, understood fully what this meant and what the impact would be. But, you know, I add to your thanks to him for really responding to the outreach that you made to City Council to provide that little kernel of funding to be able to have so much more impact than just what a really reasonable amount of dollars represents. So, thanks for telling us the story. Other comments from members of council? Mrs. Katz?
Mary, would you please hold up the flyer and show how the peace walk with where the peace polls are throughout the country? This is just not here in Williamsport. There are other areas in the country.
Yeah, yeah. This is a flyer from the 13-Moon Walk for Peace. We had an art show at the Campbell Street Center, where this poll was planted, and we have a list here of peace polls around the country. We started in New Orleans, and then we went into Houston, Austin, LA, San Jose, Denver, reservations, Native American reservations around the West as well, then into Chicago, Lansing, Detroit, Cleveland, Cincinnati, Pittsburgh, Williamsport, and then into Newark, Harlem, New York, Philadelphia, Downingtown, Baltimore, Washington, Bowling Green, Virginia Beach, Charlottesville, Asheville, Franklin, Tuskegee, and Atlanta, Georgia. So, it was, the last peace poll was on Second Street. That was the last one of this 13-Moon Walk for Peace. It was part, as I said, a national peace trail.
We have, we do have three here in the city.
We do, and Williamsport is the only other city besides Houston that has three peace polls in it. So, I think they've really been effective. One is at the Campbell Street Center, the other is at the YWCA, and the one on Second Street. So, I think it's really made a difference in the community, because it's a symbol of peace and unity, and involving all the residents to participate in the planting and the words that go on it.
Thank you. Ms. Relles?
I did verify with Captain Jody Miller that even, to this day, there's a change in that neighborhood. Several things happened at that time and subsequent to that with property owners and different things that have changed the atmosphere there. There's a community garden or two there. You know, I just, we focus on a lot of kinds of development, which is part of our job, and big, big projects. But when I first ran for council, I was aware of our neighborhoods, and there's a great need there. And a city's really only as strong as its neighborhoods are. It doesn't matter how many big businesses you have or how much commerce. If your neighborhoods aren't strong, you don't have a wholesome, a whole community. If everybody's not experiencing some things that they need at a basic level, we're not doing our job in that respect. And when I look at it that way, I think this is the best amount of money that's been spent since I've been on council, to see a change in people's lives. And it's not just a cosmetic change. When you give people hope and an expectation that things can change, that they're not trapped in a certain kind of atmosphere, an oppressive situation, I mean, that's what we need. That's what we, the kind of change that we really need. And whatever catalyst it is, there's different things that are gonna work in different places, but this worked so well there. And, you know, to try to demean it in some way politically just kind of bothered me. So, I'm just so happy to hear this story, and I think we all are, and thank everybody who was involved in it and worked so hard. We get to hear the success, but you're the people that put the boots on the ground and the energy that was needed to make that change.
Other comments? To add to what Mr. Allison said about our neighborhoods, you know, you look around the city, and the strongest neighborhoods have had some kind of catalyst. Sometimes it's a peace poll, sometimes it's other things, but some kind of catalyst to bring them together and help them to build that community, whether it's a park, whether it's a group of neighbors fired up about something and coming down to City Hall and advocating for what they care passionately about, or a peace poll. In each case, it's about building the kind of trust and community that you talked about. And we can all learn about the opportunities and the hope that that brings, and try to replicate it in our own neighborhoods, and the kinds of things you talked about, about trying to provide that little spark to help other neighborhoods that are having a hard time overcoming whatever challenges they face, and bringing something to the table to serve and try to help. So, thank you both again for taking some time out this evening to help share the good news.
Yes, thank you so much.
I think all our talking has made somebody tired. I see rubbing of eyes. Would you like to add anything? Would you like to say anything? No? Are you sure? Thanks again. With that, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is reappointments to the Building Code Board of Appeals. Mr. Girardi?
Yes, good evening, President Williamson and members of council. What you have before you is a reappointment of seven members to the ICC Building Code Board of Appeals. I gave everyone a copy of the section of the code. That section, 113, is in every one of the codes as far as what we adopt the ICC, which is the building, plumbing, mechanical, existing structures, property maintenance codes. It's required by that ordinance that we have an appeal system, so that if I make a determination on a code saying a building's X amount of square feet is required to have a sprinkler system, someone may look somewhere in that code and say, "No, it's not. It's this." And if I say, "No, it's not. It's this," that's the board they have to go to to appeal it. The three different sections, I think it's 113-3, basically says how these individuals should be qualified in the profession, so that they can make a good determination on whether or not I made the proper determination. The members we have on the board all have different aspects of their lives that they've been involved with. Mr. Lundey is an engineer. Melissa Rakkish is a professional. Anthony Visco's an architect. Dave Daniker's involved with the Williamsport Hospital, does a lot of their construction projects. He's also was a CVC head contractor, did a lot of work on the site. Bill Earl is a master plumber. Kermit Grove is the newest appointee. He is in certified electrical inspection. He does mostly inspections in the city. Plus, he's also a ex-fireman, which I need a fireman on that board. And Walt Nyman is retired. He was involved with Penn College for 20, 30 years. He's also involved with a lot of the construction, the overseer of those projects. So, it's a very professional board. These individuals have not been appointed in a while. That was my fault. Now that I have them all updated, I'll make sure that they come back through to you for reappointment at the time that their time has expired. So, I'm requesting that these seven members be reappointed.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve those reappointments?
No.
Hearing motion, a second. One thing I'll start the comments by saying is, we had a discussion a couple months ago, I think it was, about a pending appeal or two, I think, that are coming up, and a discussion about how this fit into our, not new procedure, but it's now a couple of years' old procedure, of making sure that we had an opportunity for the committees to meet with individuals that serve on boards of the committee. And council, although they're free to disagree tonight, at the time, heard Mr. Girardi out and at least tacitly agreed with him that, in this case, it might make sense, because it's not a board that's been active at all, long enough where everyone's terms had expired quite some time ago. They meet for a specific purpose. They're appointed because of their professional backgrounds, and they're not likely to meet regularly in the future, except in specific instances. And maybe most importantly, they neither make decisions as a board or commission or authority might otherwise make, including recommendations to council on policies, but instead are making quasi-judicial decisions, that in this case, that we agreed to allow this to come forward without those interviews happening. I think it's also the thought then, is once they're reestablished, then, as these terms expire in 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, then we'll get back in that habit, because it won't be kind of an en masse situation. And so, unless somebody disagrees with my take of that discussion tonight, I think that's why we're here, without those interviews having happened. So, with that, I'll open it up for comments or questions from members of council. Ms. Mealy?
The only comment is that I believe that many of these people were surprised to find that they still served on the board in question. And with that said, because we need a very specific makeup on this board, I think, as we always say to all of our boards and commissions, "Thank you very much for your service," because it is, when you're only being called up every five years, it's a different kind of obligation, I suppose, but nonetheless, an obligation to ask for your expertise in a situation like this.
Any other comments? Hearing none, then the motion is to approve all of the reappointments to the Board of Appeals. Ms. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are approved.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And while you're up there, there's been a request to allow an opportunity for someone to make a motion to sus- someone to make a motion to suspend the rules, and if that passes, would allow us to add an agenda item to the agenda that's related to your world. So, I'm gonna make an opportunity for anyone to make a motion to suspend the rules.
I will make that motion.
Hearing motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing motion, a second. Mrs. Frank on the motion to suspend the rules.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubialo?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and so the, the suspension of the rules then allows for me to also then respond to a request that I had to allow us to revisit a decision that was made two weeks ago on property at 343 West Fourth Street, in which there was a decision to deny the request for demolition. I'm told by our solicitor, for us to be able to revisit that decision, we need a motion to vacate the decision. So, we suspended the rules so that we could allow for a motion to vacate that decision, which then allows us to, to make a new decision, if council decides.
If we so choose.
So, is there a motion to vacate the decision?
So move.
To reject the application for demolition of 343 West Fourth Street?
Second.
I hear a motion, and I hear a second. Is that a motion subject to discussion?
You could.
I think so. Are there any comments or questions on the motion to vacate the decision? Hearing none, Mrs.?
Wait, hang on, one small question. My understanding is we're vacating the decision, then we make a new decision, correct?
Yes.
So, the point for comments and questions follows. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So, on the motion to vacate the decision, Ms. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubialo?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and so the decision to deny the application for demolition on 343 West Fourth Street is approved. The, the motion to vacate the decision is approved. I, I have to try to repeat all of this back into the record for Mrs. Frank, for when she types all this up, so it's important that we get the wording right. And with that decision vacated, now we have an opportunity, if there is a decision, a desire to make a new decision, which I'm told that there is, and so now we need, would need a motion, then, under the normal course of this kind of agenda item, it would be a motion to approve the demolition. A motion to approve the application for demolition on 343 West Fourth Street. That was the motion that was under consideration two weeks ago that Mr. Girardi presented.
That was correct. There was a motion to, to revisit that, and to be able to allow Ms. Mealy the opportunity to maybe find someone who would develop this property, give her some ample time. That's, I believe, is what we discussed.
And so I think what we'll do is start with the basic motion, which is, when it appears on the agenda, then it's a motion to approve the application for demolition, and then we'll go from there. So, is there a motion to approve the demolition of 343 West Fourth Street?
So move.
Second.
I hear a motion, and I hear a second. Are there comments or questions from members of council? Ms. Mealy?
Well, I'm the one who started it all last time. Yes, I, I guess I, I, for one thing, Jonathan, just for the record, I believe it was actually four weeks ago that we, that we made our initial decision. And the reason that that's important is because this would be our final opportunity, if we wanted to revisit the decision, to do so before it becomes a firm decision on the books. So, with that said, yes, almost 30 days ago, we arrived at a very difficult decision as a council, and I believe much to the surprise of those of us who arrived at that decision. I think all of us knew what we personally felt was the right thing to do, but, but we were surprised to find concurrence amongst our colleagues. That said, at that council meeting, we demonstrated what I think was a pretty clear desire to see an adaptive reuse found for the structure at the corner of Center and Elmira Streets, not, if at all possible, to see the structure demolished. And that was the meat of our decision to, to deny the demolition. We'd spoken to the, the, the current owner of the structure, who indicated that he didn't want to, to wait, you know, a significant period of time before beginning demolition, and, and so we, we moved to, to deny. In the intervening four weeks, we've had, there's been very interesting discussion in the, in the press about our, from, from all sides, but, but despite the, what, what may have been in the paper, we've actually had, several members of council have had a very productive dialogue with both, or, you'll pardon me, and I may have to defer actually to Mr. Demshock, who's in the audience this evening. The, the property is, is, I believe, sort of jointly owned by Mr. Logue and Mr. Klingerman at this point.
It's titled in Mr. Logue's name.
Titled in Mr. Logue's, Logue's name currently. Anyway.
And, and just let me pause here. If, if I could have you come to the lectern and just put your name into the record, I'm gonna guess there'll be other opportunities for you to comment or react to questions, and that, we might as well put your name into the record here at the beginning, so that Mrs. Frank can, that'll help her when she's doing the minutes.
Okay.
So, if you could give your name and affiliation, please.
My name's Mark Demshock, D-E-M-S-H-O-C-K. I'm representing George Logue and Dan Klingerman.
Thank you very much. It may be a few minutes before that actually happens, but.
And thank you, Mr. Demshock, for attending tonight's meeting in, in their stead. And actually, that, that, if, if you don't mind staying up there for just one second, I, I did wanna clarify a little bit. Mr. Klingerman was the owner of the parcel for quite a while. It was conveyed to Mr. Logue toward the end of 2017. He thought that he had potential to reuse the structure, decided that in fact, he, he couldn't find a, a reuse for it. And, and so, council has engaged, a couple members of council have engaged in some discussions with, at least with some folks with interest in the property, who've indicated as well their interest in seeing the structure reused, if at all possible. That is to say that if we were to grant a demolition permit, the, the, the parties involved in current ownership of the structure would be open to allowing the structure, to, to allowing either myself or other members of council to access the structure, to, to find an adaptive reuse for it, to find a developer for the project. And, and it was my understanding that we're, that we're all in agreement, that it would be good to see a reuse of the, of the, of the structure, rather than to see it come down. But the current owners, the current owner, Mr. Logue, the current potential owner, Mr. Klingerman, you'll excuse me, the legal quagmire surrounding the ownership is still a little bit of a mystery to me, don't have any use for the structure. And, and so consequently, we, we sort of arrive at today, where the, the easiest thing potentially to do to avoid a legal challenge and keep all the parties on, on a good footing, because I, because I, my understanding is that we are all operating in, in good faith, and that we, and that we all want the best thing for both the city and, and for this building in particular, is that we've reintroduced the question of the demolition permit. And, and the concept that I'm proposing is that we set a few conditions on the permit, that, well, one major condition on the permit, which is that, that we have 120 days to work with outside developers and, and/or any, any party that we choose to initiate a course of action to save the structure and reuse the structure. And that the, and that Mr. Logue and/or Mr. Klingerman, whoever winds up with ownership of the structure, agrees to allow full access to the structure, blueprints, et cetera, any information that we would need to, to provide to a developer to reuse the structure, and also that they're committed to working with members of city council and others to enable a successful reuse of the parcel, whatever that may, you know, come to mean here moving forward. I am, that's some quick wording that I came up with. I am open to discussion and suggestions from other members of council, but, but I did wanna sort of put my ideas out there first, and then throw it back to everybody else.
Before we make that a motion in particular, or adjust from that, Mr. Demshock, if you could react to those, please, the potential conditions that might be added to the approval of the demolition.
Yeah, I, I, I think, starting out, I, I think everybody is on the same page that we would love, or Mr. Logue and Mr. Klingerman would love to be able to reuse that building. It's just not economically feasible. So, they're willing to, to do what's necessary to see if there's other individuals or companies out there that would like to redevelop or explore that. So, I don't think there's any problems with the contingencies. 90 to 100 days was, was mentioned previously, and there's no issue with that. As far as due diligence, access to the property, they're willing to cooperate and have the property managers there to assist.
Ms. Mealy's number that she just used was 120 days, so I just want you to clarify the 90 to 100 to 120.
I, I don't think there's any problem with 120 days.
Okay.
Just, just to be clear, I, I picked that, I know that we have a requirement that, that we, if we were to need to demolish the building, we would like it not to sit through another winter on that site. And so, the 120 days runs us out to about the end of October, which I figure was probably about as late as you could really get away with the demolition, so. And I'm assuming we wouldn't really be looking at reseating, but I believe the proposal for that lot, otherwise, would be a parking lot anyway, so reseating probably wouldn't serve our purposes, correct?
Parking lot next to it?
Yeah.
Is it the intent?
Well, I know we're looking at a parking lot next to it, but my understanding was that they were, that the initial consideration was a parking lot for the entire parcel.
Right.
So, if the building were to come down at the end of October, they'd be required to either reseed or construct the parking lot by spring.
Correct, they're either required to seed it or come in with land development showing you the other extension of the parking lot that they already got approved for the other side of the land. Yes.
So, it's a timeframe that could work, given, you know, just the, the construction/ demolition season, I suppose, in this case, and doesn't, it doesn't particularly impact negatively whatever plans the owners have.
No.
So, with that then said, let me open it up to other comments, questions, one members of council. I was not at the meeting where this was discussed at length, and, you know, I won't belabor what was discussed for very long, except to agree with, you know, I think, what, what we're hearing tonight, it is, I think, everyone's desire. And we've been through this as a community before, in terms of trying to find the right balance between historic and cultural preservation and economic realities. And, and, and my sense is, not of this particular property, but of most properties, that the argument for any particular demolition is always, it's not economically viable, and the argument against demolition is generally, but not always, that this is an important historical structure, or part of a fabric of, of, of a particular community. And, and, you know, that's this issue. I, I don't belabor any one individual involved, their perspective on that particular issue, but I also just wanted to point out that neither argument is unique to this particular building. It is an important corner that ties together our downtown, CBD, if we want to use the proper term, but our downtown to our historic district. It's a, a building with history, it's a site with even more history, going back, I think, based on some research I had done, at least to the 19th century as a Y site. It's a building that has character at an age in which not many new buildings get built with character, and so, but there has to be limits on, on, you know, wishful thinking, if that's all it can ever turn into. And so I think, you know, finding this reasonably agreed-to amount of time that allows to, us to all work together, instead of opposed to each other, to find out if wishful thinking can turn into reality. And I'm hopeful that it can be, because different people will look at a structure and see different potential and different possibilities. You know, it's a reasonable solution. And so, thank you, and, and thank Mr. Klingerman and, and Mr. Logue for being willing to, to try, and to cooperate to, to see if, if that potential can be realized. Other comments, Ms. Mealy?
Yeah, just that I, I do appreciate everyone sort of coming to the, to the table, and, and being, I guess, open and honest and willing to work with one another. It's something that we've, that, that we've been advocating for a lot here, in city council, and nationally, all over. And, yeah, compassion and community building, as we've just discussed, are very important, and I, I would like to see this, this building be a, a part of that in a very different fashion from the, from the discussion we were just having. The, I guess, from a very nuts and bolts perspective, Mr. Demshock, I, I think I said this at the meeting four weeks ago, said this again in discussions with Mr. Klingerman, even 120 days is not a lot of time in terms of initiating a transfer of ownership and putting together all the funding and, and everything like that that might be necessary. I'm working to find wording that basically says if we've located, if we've, if we've found a workable project within that 120-day period, then Mr. Klingerman's willing to give us time to flush it out and make it move, and let it move forward, or Mr. Logue. I, I, I'm not trying to, to hold things up indefinitely, but I am realizing that in, you know, even, even the Destination 2014 project took us years to put together the funding for, and that was a larger project than one single building, and I understand that. But, but I guess I'm, I'm trying to convey, from my perspective, an acknowledgement of the, the, the intent versus the reality of, of putting an entire project together in the next four months, and hoping that you're, that you understand what I'm saying, that we will, that I, that I will make a good faith effort, and if we appear to be moving toward a conclusion of some sort within 120 days, will that be sufficient for the parties involved?
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
You know, I drafted contracts before where it set the close on a certain date, and there was just open items that needed to be done, financing, further due diligence, and it was extended upon request.
Okay.
I'm not sure how to craft that into.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, but this, this discussion serves to a certain extent as a matter of record, so that's why I'm.
Right, but I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Excellent. Then, then yes, I, I, I thank, I thank you very much. That, that, would you like me to make the official motion? Okay. Thank you, Jonathan.
And, and if you have any suggestions, as she's struggling through the wording, please.
Would you like Mr. White to make the official motion?
Mr. White will turn off.
Okay. So, I would make a motion to add a kind of a wordy condition to the demolition permit, which is that members of city council, or have, or others within the community, have 120 days to initiate a course of action to save and, save and reuse the structure. That the, the, the owners of the parcel, as they currently, either, both Mr. Logue and Mr. Klingerman, whoever should happen to be in ownership of the parcel, or it travels with the land if someone else, for some reason, would take ownership of the parcel, acknowledge that they are willing to allow full access to the structure, to the blueprints, et cetera, and that they're committed to working with council and others in the community to enable a successful reuse of the parcel.
I have, and, and I'd like the record to show that the title of this motion is a kind of wordy condition. That's what, that was her language. I have a motion for a kind of wordy condition. Is there a second?
One second.
Hearing motion, a second. Is that precise enough for everyone's needs? Kind of precise? Is the intent clear in your mind as well?
I think so.
Okay. And so, are there further comments or questions on the motion to add a condition? Mr. Allison?
I guess I can, well, we haven't voted on the, this is, we're gonna add the condition.
Yeah, this is a motion essentially to amend, and then we'll vote again on the actual application.
I'll just, I have a comment, I'm, I can just put it in here, it'll fit anywhere. It was an awkward development, let's say, four weeks ago, the way things went. And I just wanna say that in some, some have characterized council as being anti-development because of that vote in different quarters. And we've had, I think, a pretty good working relationship with. And we've had, I think, a pretty good working relationship with Mr. Klingerman over the years with different things in the city, and it's worked out well. And in development in general, we've been very supportive of. And in fact, the major development that's going on right now in the city, and is going to break ground with Lycoming College soon, is the East Third Street Gateway Project. And that is a city council initiated, and city council laid the groundwork and the framework of the relationships for that agreement to be built on and to move ahead. That's something we've brought to the table. We've been asked, what have we done to bring money into the city? Well, there's going to be groundbreaking and building at Lycoming College, that's going to be permits, other kinds of licenses and fees, everything associated with that that's going to come into the city. I think we deserve some credit for that. We're not anti-development at all. We just, we take other things, we don't just say, development, okay, go ahead, have your way. We like to analyze it, we like to look into it, we like to know implications, possible implications, and we want to get the best deal that we can for the city. So there are times when we're characterized as being obstructionist or kicking up our heels, but we feel like we're just doing our job to make sure that it's the best and soundest project for the city. And most of the times, that's not that hard to do, but when there are details that we need to dig into, we're not afraid to do it, and we do, but that doesn't make us anti-development. I think that just makes us organize and seeing a need for things to fit in in different places in the city where it can, down the road, encourage other like-minded developments. So I just wanted to get that two cents in there.
Thank you for that. It's, I find myself comparing to what we're doing here in the city to what's happening on a national basis often lately. And on a national level, there's a lot of labeling and name-calling that seems to be happening, and I hope that as a community, we can model different behavior, that we can model doing our job. We can model disagreeing and yet then working together to find out solutions that we can all live with, even if we're not always happy with the exact, every detail. That's what serious adults do. And I like working with serious adults. And so hopefully, we can see more of that at other levels of government.
How about not-so-serious adults? How do you feel about those?
Working, as opposed to being entertained by them or recreating or something. So, thank you for those comments, it was going to be my main point, Mr. Allison. Other comments or questions on the motion to add a condition? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on the motion to add a condition?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and so the motion to add a kind of wordy condition is approved. Now we're back on to the now amended, or now conditioned, application for demolition. Are there other comments or questions? The only thing I would add is now it's time for us to be creative and collaborative and see if we can't do what we'd all like to do, which is to overcome what is a difficult economic equation on a building that I personally think is worth saving, but the dollars have to be there, and so there's a lot of hard work and detailed work left to do to make that happen. Ms. Mealy?
And I guess I would follow up on that as the person who has, in this case, spearheaded perhaps all the trouble, but also all of the, just things that have happened of late, that I would welcome any suggestions that might come either from other members of council or from the community as a whole, both for what good reuse of the structure looks, should look like, would look like for the community, and also, of course, ideas for funding reuse possibilities. I've been surprised already at how much positive comment and how much positive input I've gotten from people all over Williamsport and all over the area, but I look forward to trying to turn that into real change here, first off, and then hopefully turning that into, you know, hopefully moving on from this project to other real change in the city that is not quite as hotly contested. And I would second Mr. Allison's comments. I believe that in my personal experience with the members of city council with whom I currently serve, all of us are pro-positive development within our city and pro-conscientious development within our city, but we believe in our, and I specifically believe in my responsibility to make certain that we dot our i's and cross our t's in every project and make certain that everything happens as we need it to and as is best for our community. And if that looks obstructionist, then by all means, it's not intended to. We are simply doing our due diligence and working to do the best that we can for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. With no further comments or questions, Mrs. Frank, on the motion to approve the demolition with conditions?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the motion to demolish with conditions is approved. Thank you again, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Just two comments on, number one would be, for then 120 days, the property's going to sit like it does, because I can't make anybody put grass out there and have them run over it if they're going to demo it in 120 days. So everybody knows that nothing's going to be done with that property. Now, 120 days come by, you find someone to do something, wants to take this building over, I'm assuming they're going to have the same amount of time as Mr. Klingerman had to repair that wall also, because the last thing I want to do is that that thing's set forever either. So, just so you know, I think we can work with the developer, but I think it's unfair to make the new developer have seven years to fix the wall, when Mr. Klingerman technically only had three months to fix the wall. I'm just making sure I get my ducks in a row when that 120 days comes, and we do have a developer, how long is council going to want that wall to look like that?
Well, hopefully, this is my opinion, hopefully, at that point, we'll have a clear development plan with a timeframe.
Super.
That would deal with, you know, not only the exterior, but the interior plans as well.
And I would assume that, I'm just bringing that out so we're all on the same page.
You know, that is going to be one of the unfortunate consequences, is that issue will remain unresolved.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to jump around on the agenda.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Oh, geez, Joe, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Jump down on the agenda, figure birthdays first, and then somebody's got a big event to manage next, to the item related to the James David Robinson Cultural Arts Grant. And for the record, Mrs. Frank, I'm going to be abstaining on this item, so I'm going to turn the gavel over to Mr. Allison.
Resolution to approve the 2018 James David Robinson Cultural Arts Grant Program. The first one is Repas Band for $1,000, Community Theater League $1,000, Bald Eagle Art League for $400, Williamsport Symphony Orchestra for $300, Newberry Community Partnership for $300.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Novinger?
Good evening, President Williamson and members of council. So before you this evening, we have the James David Robinson Cultural Grant that we would like to award this evening. It is funded through $3,000 in the general fund. Local artist organizations apply for the grant funding for cultural and arts-related events that are held in the city of Williamsport. Grants are scored on a point system based on the grant's proposals, artistic merit, community support, project description, and administrative capability. The grants have been reviewed, and the following have met the requirements. So as Mrs. Frank said, the Repas Band for the Liberty Classic Community Band Festival at $1,000, the Community Theater League, An Evening with a Star for $1,000, the Bald Eagle Art Show, the Bald Eagle Art League for the Ways Garden Art Show at $400, the Williamsport Symphony Orchestra Holiday Concert at $300, and the Newberry Community Partnership, Welcome to Newberry Light Pole Banners at $300. Is there any questions that I can answer for you about this?
Thank you, Ms. Novinger. This was reviewed in finance?
It was supposed to be reviewed by the finance committee. Randy, I love how you act like you weren't involved.
Have to be, unslung.
Finance did review this item and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. It's, we did not acknowledge this in finance, but it's a relatively paltry amount of money to put into the arts in the city of Williamsport. That said, the committee has been doing a particularly excellent job over the last few years in evaluating the applications, I think, and putting thought, but not too, not a ridiculous amount of thought into the awards, making certain that things are fairly distributed. So we thank, we thank, this is Novinger, for doing all this work for us, and I think actually most of council's discussion about the item related to how to prevent the printing out of such an egregious amount of paper in coming years. We receive every application as part of our packet, which is lovely, but probably we could do it electronically and be okay. We forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy, Mrs. Katz?
I think everyone, everybody should go to see everything that's on this list. The Repas Band, of course, has been around forever, and they're incredible. The Community Theater League Evening with a Star is one of the most fantastic productions that these kids put on. The Ways Garden Art Show, I mean, it's fantastic. The Holiday Concert with the Symphony is another one that's absolutely fantastic. If nobody's gone to see it, I don't know about the Newberry Light Poles.
I was going to say, that one is new this year. So the Jackson School art students actually created the art, and the grant funds would provide the materials for the West Branch School students, as well as printing costs of the banner, some hardware for hanging the banners, and the graphic design assistance. So it's basically taking children's art and putting it on Welcome to Newberry banners that will hang in appropriate seasons and then be put away for winter.
Don't you find it incredible that Newberry has done so much with the kids and the murals and everything else? I mean, they really emphasize the kids' art in that area, which I think is fantastic, I really do. So this is another piece that goes into the puzzle of what they do there.
Correct.
Any other, Mr. Noviello?
This is always kind of a pleasure. This is one of the least troublesome expenditures a city ever seems to go through. Anytime we can promote our culture, particularly from within, and the talent that we have amongst our citizenship, it's a good draw from outside our area as well. It's an opportunity for people to come and visit us, see what we do have to offer as a community, and certainly as a cultural center. I think that we're meeting that need pretty well with what we do here. This is just one small component of that, and I'm happy to be a part of acknowledging it, so thank you.
Thank you.
I know Jess is going to leave after this, but I want to say, what you're going to be doing the next two days, thank you very much for all the work that you put in. It's Homemade Days.
Yes.
And people don't understand the amount of work that does go into this, and please, everybody that's out there, please go and support Homemade Days.
I was going to say, my shameless plug is that it's tomorrow from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There will be live music, we have 19 food vendors, we have over 90 craft vendors, so come on out and check it out. It's a great way to, again, show that our local and regional cultural artisans are out there, so, again, come check it out.
And all of the great work that she did for the Street Food Festival. That was great weather and a successful day, I believe, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for that also.
Hearing no more comments. Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlotter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Abstain. Then we'll move back up the agenda to the next item, which is ordinance adopting a six-year capital project. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance adopting a six-year capital budget project for the city of Williamsport for fiscal years ending June 30, 2019 to June 30, 2024.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance at first reading, please?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Mr. Nichols, how are you this evening?
Good evening, President Williamson, Vice President Allison, members of council. I'll try to be brief, so I'll simply, any questions?
This is standard.
No, this is standard.
It's a standard ordinance. So this was reviewed by?
Finance.
Okay. Ms. Mealy?
Oh.
Oh. Mr. Nichols?
Oh, thank you. No, I'll just briefly go through Section 2, as I've done in the past. As you know, this is to adopt a six-year capital program in City Williamsport. It acts not only as a planning tool, but it's also somewhat of an action plan, looking at the first two years, as with any capital project. And this program, there are three steps. This is, the first step is this planning or programming document. The second step is to budget a particular project in the annual city budget, and then the third step is to actually award a contract for a particular project, and obviously, that would be in front of the city council. This document can change as, you know, things evolve, and especially with large projects, as has happened in the past. It also serves as our document that we need for some regulatory requirements. So that brings us to the ordinance before you. There are four sections to the report. I want to thank Joe Pavlock for taking the lead and putting this together, and the department has submitted information about their needs as it relates to capital planning. First section is a status report for the current year, and that just gives you an update as to whether the project is ongoing, whether it's completed, or it's being deferred or delayed to a future year. The second section is actually the capital project's budget for the six-year timeframe. The third section gives you potential funding sources, which there are numerous, and, again, that always needs to be updated as we get new grants down the line. And finally, the last section provides you with project descriptions and a narrative for each particular project. This is the first step, first reading for the ordinance. The next step, it goes before the Planning Commission on Monday, and then finance will again review it if any updates need to be talked about, and then the second reading will be at the next meeting of city council. The total six-year capital program is approximately $8 million. Again, the first two years are more or less of things that the administration feels need to be dealt with in terms of implementation, and those are the priority projects, and we're, those are the projects we look for funding right now so that we can implement them. So highlights of the first two years, as indicated in Section 2 of the report, include, again, the first two years I'm referring to. So starting on Page 1, you'll see under Public Services, a paving program for the two years, $1,502,000, and also the Brick Street Rehabilitation Project. There's a continuation of the Pathway to Health Project, that's budgeted for $900,000 in year one. There's $500,000 budgeted for work associated with storm sewers, pump stations, the drainage structures. There are two major infrastructure projects listed under Public Services, which are programmed the first two years. First one, $4,345,000 budget for improvements of Graffis Run, and this is based on preliminary information in the RE2 study that's close to completion, which we'll brought to the council to fully go over what their recommendations are, but for a total solution, you're looking at over $4 million. Again, that's, that's, seems to be the initial thought process. Then there's $10,500,000 being programmed for potential levy improvements. You know, that number, you know, has gone up recently, but that just makes the statement that that's a priority project for the next two years. There's $450,000 budget for public services equipment, facility roof replacement projects. There's a budget of $1,260,000 to upgrade city fac- There's a budget of one million, two hundred sixty thousand dollars to upgrade city facilities related to recreation, and a million, three hundred thousand dollars for Bowman Field. There's also, on page three, the proposed Public Safety Department budget for the first two years provides for the purchase of seven police cars, and that's in the amount of three hundred seventy-two thousand dollars. Also, the continuation of the surveillance, video surveillance system is envisioned for two hundred twenty thousand dollars, and with proposed funding from the federal government. Also, a budget of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for upgrades to, or purchase of portable radios. Under the Codes Department, Joe is not here, but under the Codes Department, the budget for the first two years is a mystery. There's nothing there, so I, I don't know if you make it up, or whatever. Or he's very lean and mean in terms of his budgeting, but there are some things budgeted in the, the out-years. Fire Department capital projects budget includes a five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for a new pumper in year three, one hundred forty thousand dollars for facility improvements, with funding from the Community Development Block Grant Program. There is a budget for sport vehicles, breathing apparatus, and computer software, ten thousand is budget for the upgrade of the fire hiders and laterals. Under page four, under General Government, there's a budget of four million, nine hundred five thousand dollars for the East Third Street Gateway Revitalization Project, which was rescheduled as indicated in the status report, Section One. Also, under General Government, funding for support equipment, MIS upgrades, and the City Hall renovation project. We're very close to bringing that to Public Works first, and then the city council. We have an architect working on the design. It's, the, part of that presentation will deal with accessibility and security, and we'll be unveiling the Girardi Ramp, which will be quite a new addition to City Hall, and that's programmed in the first two years. Under Transportation, River Valley Transit, programming three million, eight hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of six CNG replacement buses in year two. That will complete our conversion, believe it or not, so, doesn't seem that long ago where, you know, we suggested that would be a great project, and now it's almost completed. Hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of sport vehicles, three hundred fifty thousand dollars for purchase pair components of sport equipment, two million dollars for the River Valley Transit Economic Development Projects, and additional four million, two hundred thousand dollars for certain elements of the East Third Street Revitalization Corridor. So, our part of the capital budget is fifteen million dollars over the first two years, and, and, for example, listing, our funding comes from various sources, federal, state grant sources, River Valley Transit, other local funding, such as First Community Foundation of Pennsylvania. So, I was gonna say, the department heads are here tonight to answer any questions, but I don't see that many, so I'll be glad to answer any questions. And Finance did review this budget, and they'll take any questions.
Ms. Mealy, Finance?
Finance did review the capital budget, and we sent it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. There are a, there were a few curious items within the capital budget, but a large chunk of it was, of course, about what we expected. The, as everyone noticed undoubtedly, the street tree element under Public Services is predicated on us receiving a tree vitalized grant annually, plus our hazardous tree program at twenty thousand a year. I got really excited to see that twenty thousand a year, and then realized that was where it was coming from. But, the, we, we had some discussions related to the separation of storm sewers item on page one, under Storm Sewers. That current sort of water and sewer thinking is that storm sewer separation is no longer advantageous, since we are also responsible for our storm water and our storm water runoff. If it's being treated by our water treatment facility, then we have less issue, we have fewer issues, at least within the downtown area. Mr. Nichols did say that even though we do budget a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there annually, we never actually spend it, and it has not been a major priority for us. Probably a good thing, because now, as it turns out, our priorities should be different. But, but you'll have noticed both on the separation of storm sewers line and over under Public Services, the pump station structure and drainage structure, that there are no budgeted amounts after the first two years, and that's because all of us are still anticipating the potential creation of a storm water authority, either within the Water and Sewer Authority or without it anyways, something that would take over those responsibilities from the city of Williamsport. And, and hopefully then, they too would not decide to separate the storm sewers. And let me see here, other items, a few notes that we, we did have some discussion about Bowman Field, and the, in the simplified version, in, in the project listing part of the capital projects budget, the funding is, well, put it this way, if you look into the Funding Strategy segment, there's a large chunk, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, that has no funding source whatsoever, and Mr. Nichols proposed that we put NIC in there, for Bill Nichols is funding the money. So, we're, we're waiting to hear more about that project. We do, we are potentially working on a redevelopment and capital assistance grant with the state, depending, as we discussed with Mr. Nichols, on the, the outlook on the far more important levy grant that we're, that we're working on putting in for redevelopment and capital assistance funding. And then the rest of the funding remains to be discussed, but, but Mr. Nichols is hopeful that we can make all of that come together between now and, and June of next year, so. Otherwise, Memorial Park Improvements, that line item is related, I believe you saw this in the detail, but related to the replacement finally, or a chunk of it is related to the replacement finally of the handicapped accessible park surface. It's been in relative disrepair for quite a while, but Mr. Pavlock informed me that probably, actually, the, the funding source should be listed as private slash Act thirteen. And I suppose that we could ask, Mr., Chief Young was not at the meeting on, on Tuesday for obvious reasons, but I, Chief Young, do we have any particulars, particularly stronger outlook on either the video surveillance or the portable radio in terms of grant funding?
No, the grant funding is for the Motorola portable radios, the JAS grant. That dollar amount was entered into there because of an ongoing discussions regarding surveillance cameras, additional cameras, but there's nothing in the works right now regarding it specifically.
Okay. Got it. So, yeah, we, we had some questions about whether or not, anything specific was, we had anything in mind, but I guess we've got another year or two undone. But, Chief, Chief Young, just, I suppose, to mention it at our Finance meeting, at least, we had some discussions about surveillance cameras, and specifically the ones that we already have in place, their functionality, et cetera, et cetera. If we are looking to apply for a grant for further surveillance cameras, it might, it might not be unwise to initiate the discussions with members of council early, do you know what, and, and with the city as a whole, I suppose, to talk about where we want surveillance cameras, how we want them to be put out, and to make certain that we get the best bang for our buck, I guess. I think specifically what we discussed was very inexpensive cameras, if we're looking at something like that, and putting money into the network, which will continue to have value, and not into the cameras, which, let's face it, in a couple of years are likely to be outdated anyway. So, just, just putting it out there, it was an item of lively discussion with city council the last time that we put up surveillance cameras, and so if we, if we're looking to do it again, then we probably should start that discussion earlier rather than later.
My plan was to go directly to public safety with that at the onset, and through the conclusion, which could be a conclusion regarding.
Right. Wonderful. Thank you. And, let me see here, Mr. Nichols, I neglected to ask one question at the Finance meeting. That's, I would point out, I suppose, to all of council, that you'll see that East Third Street is budgeted not just under general government, but also under transportation. That is not an accident. We really are looking at approximately eight and a half million dollars this year related to the East Third Street Gateway Project. And, and that's a good chunk of money, and it's going for a really good project that we're hoping will, will go a long ways to revitalizing that neighborhood, and that chunk of money is not being put into city-owned spaces, it's being put into infrastructure to provide incentive for private development. So, I think that's a, that's definitely a positive. However, the Trade and Transit Center complex, the two million dollars this year, Mr. Nichols, is that the, the, the bridge, the pedestrian bridge, or?
Yes, that is, yeah. It's being re-budgeted.
Got it. So, we have the application out, but?
Right.
We, that was part of the application last year as well, right?
Yeah, we, we feel that that's, that's something the Secretary of Transportation we met with, thought was an excellent project, you know, it relates to Penn dot connects, and it's something that they are still considering.
Okay.
And would be a nice addition to the East Third Street Gateway Project, another gateway opportunity. So, we'll see.
Okay. Then, that said, Finance forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions of members of council? I suppose the only thing I would add to all of that is the annual kind of discussion of, reiterate what Mr. Nichols said, the first two years are the firmer of the plan for the out-years, oftentimes what we're doing is just documenting that we've got this array of things that need to be worked on or could be worked on if funding became available. Some of those have been in out-years since I've been on council since two thousand eight without, unfortunately, in most cases, without progress. So, for example, Fox Hollow, Ryger Run, I've seen no action related to that in my time on council.
Reach Road Extension?
Reach Road Extension. And so, as a result, then, you know, if the headline ever becomes eighty million dollars of capital projects, some of that is, as often does become part of the article's wish list thinking. The first two years are much firmer, but as we just went through, even those, the, the reality changes even faster than this document can keep up with in some cases, and so, some things we know in the first two years will happen, some things we know will not happen, and some things we're still putting together whether or not they can happen. And so, it's a moving, even the first two years are a moving target across all these, and so, no one should be under the illusion or assumption or fear, in some, for some people's case, that, that in the next two years, there will be forty million dollars worth of capital spending or investment, depending on your perspective, nor in the next six years, that there will be eighty million dollars. It's simply a planning document in that regard. So, Ms. Mealy?
But, I'm sorry. No, I, what I was just gonna say is, like, as in the levy, we have, we met, and we have a, we have a definitive strategy.
Right.
As a first step, Graphis Run, the study will be coming to you, and it's a challenge, but, again, we, at least we're moving towards implementation, so.
And wonderful.
And East Third Street's the same way. We are actually moving towards, so why, we're not gonna complete that much, but all those projects will be advancing, so that's why they're in the first two years.
And, and one of the things I should say is, you know, it's hard to structure a document like this in such a way that shows kind of the pri, the priority projects, shows the kind of routine capital expenditures, and then shows the, the, the things that we know need to be backburnered because of reality. And so, clearly, we can't reiterate enough that the priority projects start with the levy, for all the reasons that we've said before, probably include, the Gateway Project, include Graphis Run, I'm, I'm missing some, I'm sure, and, and we're all working hard and working together to make sure those come to fruition. And then we also don't want to discount what I would kind of qualify as the routine capital projects. We have to replace fire vehicles, so that our fire department has capability to keep us protected within their sphere of influence. We have to replace police vehicles and police equipment to make sure that they are adequately resourced to, to meet their mission, et cetera. And so, this is a document that captures lots of different things all in one place. So, if there are no final comments, Ms. Mealy?
Just that, that on that note, the, the document does become, to a certain extent, maybe not a wish list, but when things enter our horizon as important projects, they at some point will appear in, as Mr. Nichols puts it, in, in the out-years, and then eventually could wind up hanging in the out-years as Fox Hollow and Ryger Run are, according to Mr. Nichols. That said, we, the, the, the major projects that I would term sort of exciting projects, not simply either obligations, most of those have now moved into that prime position of the first two years, which means that we, as a municipality, need to be thinking hard about the things that we want to see on our back burner moving forward, the things, the things that are important to us, that we will eventually move, that we will eventually find funding for and move into place in those first couple of years. And I know that we've, that we're working on, on looking at a project, we're looking at the neighborhood of Park Avenue, but, but we need to be thinking about things, and not just things that, that run us nine million dollars, but perhaps also things that run us the fifteen hundred dollars of a peace poll, so, small things that will make a big difference in our community, that will start somewhere in, you know, in the fifth or, in the fourth or fifth year of our capital project budget, and eventually move into becoming a reality.
And, and I think that's a good point, and as such, then this becomes an important document to structure our conversations. So, thank you to Mr. Pavlock and Mr. Nichols for taking.
Just another, you know, in this, in terms of transportation programs, you know, Penn Dot has a twelve-year program, and they divided it in four-year segments, with the first four years being their action plan, and so, you know, then the next four years are less priority, and, you know, in the, the final four years, the out-years are, you know, things that they're looking at and hope to advance once funding becomes available. So, that's sort of how we came up to structure this, to fit with, you know, other federal state programs that sort of do the same thing. They structure it in terms of action plans, and then out-years for things that they want to keep talking about.
And, and I know council would encourage us to replicate that model, 'cause it's a good model, for out-year planning on things like our operating budget as well. Mr. Allison?
Yeah, and to your point on how this can change, the, the second year out on the levy, we got talking about the I-Wall, and that's a several-million-dollar item that, well, there's questions, there's a legitimate question whether we own that, or whether the Army Corps?
Owns the problem.
Yes, the problem of replacing that I-Wall. Who, who built it, and under whose plan and blueprints, and it wasn't, it originally was not built correctly, and so now needs replaced, and that's something that could drastically change the whole focus on, on the money that's needed that year. So, there are things out there that, it's somewhat fluid, and gee, there does seem to be a thing about authorities and not knowing who owns which assets, but keeps popping up.
Whoever realized that there were so many assets out there that you could try to just stake a claim to, and nobody?
Absolutely. If there are no further comments, Mrs. Frank on the ordinance in first reading, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novio?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved in first reading. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing the purchase of a street sweeper. Can I have a motion, or Ms. Frank, please?
Resolution authorizing the purchase of a twenty eighteen Alon, Algen Worldwind Street Sweeper.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution? Hearing a motion in a second, Mr. Nichols?
Thank you again. This is, before you, is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a new sweeper, to be purchased through an authorized dealer under CoStar's contract. The cost of street sweeper is approximately two hundred eighty thousand dollars, and we'll be using a commercial lease program through FNB Bank. Annual payment will be about sixty-one thousand dollars, and the first payment won't be due until one year from the date of signing. Funding for this particular purchase is through the Streets Department's Liquid Fuels Line Item, and they did, the department did a great job assessing, you know, purchase of this vehicle. They had six different sweepers that they looked at, that came, came up to the Streets and Parks Department, and they thoroughly evaluated them, and they felt this was the best machine for the city's needs, so, and they assured. So, and they assured me that the sweeper does sweep and remove dirt, and does not sweep and put it back on the street. So, that's a really good thing, I guess.
Thank you. And I believe this was reviewed by Public, this item was reviewed by Public Works.
Yes, it was. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Katz?
I was thinking of the dust coming back in our face, as we've called this machine old old history for how many years. I think everyone in the city can attest to the fact that the sweeper that we've had is, we really need a new one. The purchase is long overdue. Mr. Winder is working out a plan right now as far as how we're gonna use the street sweeper for, to clean from curb to curb, and also how this will also be used more year-round instead of just in the summer months, because it'll make it easier to keep the city clean if it's used more often, which we haven't been able to do because of the old sweeper that we had. The old sweeper that we had was on a ten-year lease, and we really would have wanted to have gotten rid of that much sooner. In fact, this goes back to when Bill Wright was still with Streets and Parks. It was not the best sweeper, as he said, it was not the best purchase. So, but we had to wait because of the lease agreement that we had. To get this sweeper right now, I think it's going to, our city is going to be much cleaner. The purchase from, with this will also be, will come in time for Little League, which should be the beginning of August, from what I understand. And, like you said, this purchase is going to, some of this is going to come out of Liquid Fuels, and it's a five-year lease, so, and it's something that's really well-needed. The other thing that's gonna happen with Streets and Parks, and we've asked this already, is that we know we have equipment that's aging, and we are, Mr. Winder is going to start doing a calculation of what we need, what we can put on the agenda for the next few years. We used to get this from Mr. Bill Wright, and it just makes it better when we know what we can expect in the next couple of years, even though we did know that this was a piece of equipment that was much needed quicker. This was the earliest that we could come out, come up with this one. But I'm sure some of the aged equipment that we have in Streets and Parks, we'll find out as soon as possible, so we can also adjust it for the budget in the next couple of years. Streets and Parks does a wonderful job as far as maintaining and keeping us informed of what's going on, but I think we all want to see, having this in our hands, to see what we can expect for the future. So, with this, we did pass this with a positive recommendation, and looking forward to seeing the new sweeper. And I think everybody in the city is gonna be happy to see this sweeper.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Before I ask for questions, I had a couple for Mr. Nichols. So, the brochure that we had shows a couple pieces of optional equipment. Can you tell us if it has a wandering hose and whether it has a lifeliner or stainless steel hopper system?
Definitely has a stainless steel operating system, which is the right size so that it can displace the water when needed, and
And that's better than the lifeliner?
It's been thoroughly vetted by the Fire Department, so I am confident that I have no idea what I'm talking about.
It looks cool. Comments or questions, Mr. Noviello?
Just a couple of quick thoughts. One of the advantages we're getting here is we're getting this sooner than we would otherwise, because this unit is already in one piece put together.
Yes.
We're not waiting like we would do for a bunch of pieces.
Yeah, if you notice on the pricing, it's a demo unit, so it's already, you know, it's been, that's, it was brought here and they looked at it, and so we did get another discount because it was already built, ready to go. So, that was very attractive because we needed the summer.
One of the other advantages is that this one has a really smooth-working catch basin cleaning system
Right.
associated with it as well. That for some of our local smaller flooding incidents is in part due to overloaded catch basins. So, the more we can clean those out, the less of that type of concern we're gonna have as well. Also, in the offing here, as this begins to come around, we're gonna do our best, I would hope, to come up with a parking plan to accommodate the use of this unit on a monthly or weekly or whatever basis we decide that it is necessary to report it to use. So, we'll have to work out something that will work towards odd or even parking, or odd day, even day parking, something to that effect. We haven't gotten quite that far yet, but I'm sure we'll have that in place as soon as we possibly can.
I think one of you mentioned about the Chesapeake Bay requirements that are coming up, where a reduction of silt or whatever that goes into the river. And so, like what you just said, getting that dirt before it gets into the storm sewer is really critical in our reduction plan that we have to have in place. So, that's why those, this particular machine was very attractive.
Thank you.
One thing Public Works might do in working with Streets and Parks to develop the parking plan is to see if it's possible to integrate that into something that could also work during snow events.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, a parking plan is something that's used in thousands, probably hundreds of thousands of other communities all around the U.S. And it not only, of course, makes it, makes us best able to clean up the silt before it winds up in our sewer system, and to consequently get credit for it in our stormwater management plan, but also, it saves us so much time and effort as a community. When you watch the street sweeper get on your street, and half of the time it's going around a vehicle and not actually getting to the curb, you know, in the areas that we need to get, it would just, you'd make the best use of the Streets and Parks staffing time as well as the machine itself and the machine's life and utility. To me, is something that we need to get on the ground as soon as we can, just to make certain that we're getting the best use out of the machine.
Just one of the points I might, as I'm looking at the brochure, we have talked sort of in passing at Public Works with respect to MS4 issues and the silt issue particularly, the idea of permeable surfaces being incorporated as much into city planning as we can do. This unit is designed specifically to help work with permeable surfaces themselves. It's kind of a win-win situation there down the line for us, I think.
And that is, Willow Street, for example, the pedestrian greenway is going to be, you know, constructed with a permeable surface. So, that's another reason why this machine really will be useful for those type of projects.
Couple other facts I found out by talking. I actually had a chance to talk to Mr. Winder about it a little bit. A lifetime of fifteen to twenty years for the vehicle. So, we were talking about budgeting it and finance, and that would give us a longer time period to do that. For when we have to buy a new one, we wouldn't have to lease it if we put aside so much a year. We could buy it. And he thinks they may be able to run it into December, you know, and not, unless there's a heavy snowstorm or something like that, which will help keep the road off the street.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda then is a resolution authorizing the lease agreement for the street sweeper. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement for the purchase of a 2018 Elgin Worldwind Street Sweeper.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve this resolution?
No move.
Hearing motion a second, Mr. Nichols?
Thank you very much. This, again, is with FNB Bank, and this was the most desirable lease arrangement, commercial lease. Did source other financial institutions, but this was the only one that allowed that deferred payment for one year, which was needed to fit in the planning for the Liquid Fuels money. We have a set amount we can use each year out of the Liquid Fuels pot, so that deferred payment fit into the planning, so, you know, that we met the availability of the funds for this.
Thank you, and this was reviewed by Finance, Ms. Mealy?
This was reviewed by Finance. And I, for one, was not delighted to learn that we deferred the payment this very year with no money down.
It's a year of money down, zero percent interest.
Yeah, usually. Anyway, but that said, we do have a relative, you know, a good chunk of the funding for Streets and Parks vehicles comes from our Liquid Fuel allocation, and also from the general fund budget. And we do have limited funds there, and our departed head of Streets and Parks, Bill Wright, made such good use and got so many years out of all these vehicles, that now we're finding it necessary to replace them all, more or less simultaneously, which is a little bit of a hardship. So, council did forward this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation, but also a recommendation moving forward. If we can indeed realize fifteen years out of this machine, and we'll be paying on it for the next six as the way this works out, then we begin setting aside money out of Liquid Fuels, out of our Liquid Fuels budget, starting in year seven, for the purchase of a new street sweeper moving forward, because we are paying about ten percent of the purchase price over and above for the pleasure of paying it off over the next six years. And that's twenty-seven thousand bucks that we could have used to buy another piece of Streets and Parks equipment. And let's be honest, it would have purchased several, you know, it could have purchased a low-end pickup truck or something like that for Streets and Parks. So, we requested, not from Mr. Nichols, but we'll start discussions with Mr. Winder moving forward about, looking at the life, the proposed lifetime of Streets and Parks equipment and the use of the funding that we annually sort of set aside for Streets and Parks equipment to try and figure out a way to execute fewer lease agreements and do more set-asides for upcoming purchases moving forward.
Plan makes good sense to me. Are there comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution for the lease agreement.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next item on the agenda is certificates of appropriateness for Historic District. We have one, two, three items this evening at 625 West Edwin Street. There's a new sign and some painting. At 901 West Fourth Street, there is a lift being installed, as well as some railing and trellis panels. And at 727-18 West Third Street, there's a removal and replacement of porch and decking in all of its various parts, as well as some gutters, lattice work, and painting. As we always try to do, we like to read the colors. We have rookwood terracotta, rookwood dark brown, I bet those match somehow, and teal stencil, which thankfully is described as a muted green for the trim, as well as some roofing. Can I have a motion a second to approve the certificates of appropriateness?
No move.
Hearing motion a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those certificates are approved. Next item on the agenda is except for filing. We have the Economic Revitalization Committee minutes from May 1st, 2018, Finance Committee meeting minutes of May 7th, 2018, and the Veterans Memorial Commission minutes from June 2018. Can I have a motion a second to approve those for filing?
No move.
Second.
Hearing a motion a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are approved. Next item is announcements. We will be holding an executive session immediately following this meeting for the purposes of negotiation. The next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be held on Thursday, July 5th, at 7:30 p.m. here in council chambers. Other upcoming meetings include Monday, June 25th, at noon is the Planning Commission meeting, and at 4 p.m. is the Recreation Committee. On Tuesday, June 26th, that The, which?
ERC.
The Thursday, the 28th? Okay, on Thursday, June 28th, at
1 p.m.
1 p.m. is the ERC Committee meeting, and that's been advertised as such. Correct? On then Wednesday, June 27th, at 11:38 a.m. is the Redevelopment Authority. On Monday, July 2nd, at 5:30 p.m. is the Government Study Home Rule, the Government Study Commission, which is the one about home rule, in case anybody forgets. On Tuesday, July 3rd, at 11 a.m. the Historic Preservation Committee. At 1 p.m. Finance Committee. 2:30 p.m. Public Works. And at 3:30 p.m. Public Safety. I'm gonna assume on Wednesday, July 4th, City Hall will be closed. Thursday, July 5th, at 4 p.m. is the Charter Commission meeting. And that brings us to the end of that list, which then brings us to the end of our agenda. Are there any comments by members of council? Mr. Noviello?
Just a quick reference to the fact that we have two winners from our Silver Box Derby race. It will be attending the race and competing in Akron, Ohio, in the next coming week or so. One is Meredith McCann, and one is a bit of our own hometown sort of flavor here with J.O. Gilbert, one of our RBT employees' daughters, Jamie Gilbert's daughter. And she'll be taking the ride to Akron, Ohio to compete in the big race. And as I understand it, Mr. Nichols has opened up a PayPal account so that we can fund him so that he can attend the race. I'm sure he'd be looking forward to those donations.
Former councilman?
Yes.
Jamie Gellner? That's right.
So, we congratulate both of those.
Thank you. Other comments from members of council? Hearing none. Comments from the administration? Hearing none, and comments from the general public? Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Tiffany Loner Deemer. I live at 940 Hollywood Circle. I was here a couple weeks ago. Sorry, I don't have my paper with me. I'd like to start stating, I did misread information off of my sheet last week, or a couple weeks ago. I stated that there were nearly twenty thousand children under the age of eighteen. What it actually is, is there are nearly twenty thousand children in Lake Humming County under the age of fourteen. So, in thinking in regards to tonight's topic and the demolition, possibly not demolition, of the building on West Fourth Street in terms of the Children's Discovery Workshop, it would be great to do something more for the children in this, in this community. Just to continue to, I'd like to continue talking more about the strategic plan. And I think with what Mr. Nichols talked about tonight with the six-year plan that they put into place, and you mentioning, having something like that for council, I think is very, very important. I've been working with, a lot with organizational development in my current role, and one of the things that I really think that we need to have are a strategic plan here in the city, as well as metrics. We really do need to have some metrics. We need to have that clear. It needs to be transparent to all of the city constituents. I've been doing a lot of research. There are multitudes of cities ahead of the curve who already have this, and it's very transparent on their website. You can clearly see what the projects are, you can clearly see what the financial status of the city is. All you have to do is click on it, and you can see what the goal, and you can see if we're achieving those goals. I can't seem to find a lot of that for Williamsport right now. I kind of feel like we need to be there. I hear constantly that we need to run the city as a business. However, every successful business, including the educational system, has clear, well-defined goals, not just for the whole city, but for individual departments as well. So, that's just what I wanted to kind of keep pushing, keep pushing for a strategic plan here at the city. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there other comments from the members of the public? Again, your name and address for the record, please.
Joe Ferretti, 37 Elder Street, here in Williamsport. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, because this is my first meeting, and I want to thank all of you. I met most of you except for Ms. Mealy yet. There's a lot of concerns myself that I have as a citizen, as a resident, and a taxpayer, and a registered voter here in Williamsport. I could bring a wheelbarrow full of stuff in here, but what I, one of the things I would like to just talk about is that street sweeper you just talked about. The old one, I think I heard, was sixteen, seventeen years old. The 2018 you're gonna get now runs on diesel exhaust fuel, it's DEF. The cost on those trucks are tenfold compared to what that old one cost you. You're gonna have the additional exhaust of having to buy the DEF. I didn't catch whether it was gas-powered, propane-powered, or whatever, but I'm assuming it was diesel. So, that's something to keep in consideration as well. It's nice and shiny, and also, as far as the parking, look around here. Most of these families now have two and three cars. We don't have driveways. You're talking about odd and even parking. Where are we gonna park at, on the sidewalks? There's no place. And I want to see our cities be as clean as everybody else does. But we also gotta be reasonable for the families that have children going to college, that are coming going to college, that are coming and going. There's just, there's no place to put these cars. I just don't see how that's gonna work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other from the public like to speak? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
Hearing motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.